We'll call this regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order. It's Monday, October 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the evening. There are no reportable actions from our closed-session meetings. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls were dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton. Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Santinas.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Dutton.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinas, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mr. Dutton. And without objection, that'll be the order. At this time, we'll have the invocation be provided by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. And immediately following, a pledge of allegiance, Elizabeth Corpus, our Director of Planning and Building Services, will provide. So please stand with me.
Again, please bow your heads. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, again, thank you for this evening given to us to conduct the business of your place called Bellflower. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed to the entire city. We hold special acknowledgement to the gifts of community and service. We thank you for your dedication to us through the given wisdom and guidance, Father. Again, we know you have our backs. For God, again, we pray for peace, prosperity, and unity, and that you provide your hedge of protection to our armed forces, services personnel, first responders in the health endeavors, and to our public safety servants of police and fire. Father, we ask for our, again, open and thorough dialogue and bring forth, again, the eventual discernment of our actions on the items of this agenda. For this, we give to you in your Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada and Ms. Corpus. Due to legal requirements for the redistricting process, we will consider public hearing item number 11A ahead of the rest of the agenda. Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to receive final input from the community regarding the draft map of election district boundaries. And read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1410, an ordinance adopting district maps for the city of Bellflower's by-district elections. And Madam City Clerk will have the brief report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. For the benefit of the public, I will reiterate some general information and provide a summary of the redistricting process thus far. The California Elections Code requires that every 10 years, cities with by-district election systems use new census data to review and, if needed, redraw district lines to reflect how local populations have changed. This process ensures that all districts have nearly equal population. The City Council has conducted a total of three public hearings, on April 24, June 28, and October 11. This is the fourth public hearing and the final requirement for the current redistricting process. At the October 11 public hearing, the city's demography consultant, National Demographics, presented the final 2020 census data for the city of Bellflower. The final data indicated that the city's current council districts are still population-balanced and in compliance with legal requirements. As such, the council directed staff to prepare and bring back the legal documents required to re-adopt the current council district boundaries. This evening, following the conduct of the final public hearing, we have for your consideration an ordinance for introduction to re-adopt the current council district boundaries. Our consultants from National Demographics could not be in attendance tonight due to prior commitments with other client cities. The city attorney and I can help answer any questions you may have.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So, councilmembers, any questions of the report before we open the public hearing? Go ahead, Sunny.
Mayor, I have no question, but I just want to kind of reiterate my thanks to our city clerk, our city manager, our city attorney, and NDC for the work that they have done in this redistricting process. I think we've done everything that we could do under the law, and I think we exceeded the requirements under the law, especially in trying to solicit input from our residents. I think we went well and beyond the requirements. So, I really applaud them for taking those efforts, and I think they came up with a very good product that we can be very proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez, have you any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just echo those comments made by Councilmember Sunny Santinas. I think throughout the process, we've received sufficient information to back this map. The deviation is minimal. And again, I thank staff for all the hard work that they've done and what our consultants have brought to the table, and all the marketing and efforts to really engage the community on this matter. So, I'll leave it with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada, have you any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I concur with those sentiments. Again, this is our fourth hearing. There's been a lot of work done. We've gotten a lot of details from between our third and fourth. I don't see any changes, be it the numbers or anything else. And we are, again, well within the limits. And I think it's probably at this point the time to move forward. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinas, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Without objection, that'll be the order. So if anyone wants to speak, please allow them to speak at this time.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, with that, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinas to close the public hearing, supported by Councilmember Hamada. And without objection, that'll be the order. Any more discussion, or you want to make a motion, or how far do you want to go with this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance 1410, an ordinance adopting district maps for the city of Bellflower's by-district elections.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinas, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. And please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I just want to acknowledge the receipt of a comment from Mr. Larry Myers to be on the record.
So noted.
Thank you, Mr. Myers, for your input.
Okay, now we're going to resume the rest of our agenda as posted. We'll begin with announcements. I'll make the first one. The Fair Housing Foundation will be holding a virtual fair housing workshop via Zoom from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM on Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. The workshop is free and open to the public. Attendees will learn about fair housing laws, COVID-19 protections, and much more. For more information, contact the Fair Housing Foundation at 1-800-446-3247, or visit www.fhfc.org. Councilmember Sunny Santinas.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed earlier tonight, the city of Bellflower is currently undergoing our redistricting process. The redistricting process occurs every 10 years, following the release of the census results. It is an opportunity to redraw district lines based on population changes indicated in the census at the state, county, and city levels. Tonight, we hosted the fourth and final public hearing to receive community input and to introduce an ordinance adopting district maps for the city's by-district elections. For more information, you can visit our redistricting website at www.drawbellflower.org, or email redistricting@bellflower.org, or contact the City Clerk's office at 562-804-1424, extension 2222. That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santinas. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city's Economic Development Department is still accepting applications for three available grants for individuals and businesses in the city that were negatively affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The application deadline for these grants is November 4th, 2021. For more information, please contact the Economic Development Department at 562-804-1424, and that'd be extension 2010, or visit the city's website at www.bellflower.org. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their monthly morning mingle, which will take place tomorrow, October 26th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. This time, we're going to have a presentation declaring Red Ribbon Week. Whereas the city of Bellflower takes great pride in protecting the health and safety of our citizens, and whereas substance abuse can be a contributing factor in three leading causes for our children, accidents, homicides, and suicides; whereas the Bellflower Unified School District Red Ribbon Campaign, the Bellflower Council PTA, and the city of Bellflower have partnered to involve families, schools, businesses, law enforcement, and other organizations to create an environment conducive to educating our youth and preventing illegal drug use in our community; and whereas Bellflower Unified School District Red Ribbon Campaign unites students to take a visible stand against drugs, promotes family and individual responsibility for a living, healthy, drug-free lifestyles. Now therefore, I, Dan Coops, the mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby claim October 23rd through October 31st, 2021, to be Red Ribbon Week, and urge all citizens to protect our community from the dangers of drugs. And I have here the proclamation signed by all members of the council: Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny Santinas. So we proudly present this, and I'm under the impression this will be collected by the Southeast County Young Marines. They're going to pick this up at City Hall because they have interest in what we've done here tonight. So it's available for your pickup tomorrow. Next, we have Pedestrian Safety Month. Whereas walking in a healthy mode of travel that is environmentally friendly and the city of Bellflower has embraced the principle that people should be able to safely circulate through the community without cars; and whereas walkability is a positive attribute of our community; and whereas a state pedestrian environment can support economic development and local businesses; and whereas drivers and pedestrians must work together to demonstrate safe behaviors on the road, helping to protect themselves and those around them. Now therefore, I, Dan Coops, the mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2021, as Pedestrian Safety Month, and the urge that all rededicate themselves to enjoying the benefits of walking and ensuring the safety of pedestrians in our community. And again, I have a certificate here that indicates what I just read, and it's signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and of course, Councilmember Sunny Santinas. And I'm so proud to proclaim this for the month. And this will be presented, of course, to our own Public Works Superintendent and Director, Len Gurecki, because he has his influence on all these things pedestrian. So he'll get this later in the meeting, and he can post it proudly in his office. All right, moving right along. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just make a quick comment?
Sure, right ahead.
Regarding to that proclamation. Again, I want to extend, again, thanks to city staff. And again, the city joined in on the Go Human pledge through this, again, Southern California Association of Government. And I can want to thank Len for, again, working on that. And so there's a large number of cities and agencies that are pledging to ensure public safety for pedestrians. And definitely, we're taking measures. And I know we've been working on calming streets and putting in proper traffic signals and so on.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks and everything, so it's the big picture of things. And again, I want to, again, reiterate our thanks to, again, city staff.
No, I think that's great.
Thank you, Mayor.
To recognize that. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. Or if by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so you can provide your comments. Do we have any comments at this time?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stewart, live in B.
This is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider adopting Resolution 21-62, a resolution adopting a fee to recover costs incurred from processing mandatory shopping carts. Mr. Bernie Enigwas has a staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Jennifer, can I get sharing rights, please? Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Thank you. For background, on October 11th, 2021, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1409, amending BMC Chapter 8.18 to establish the regulation for the use, retrieval, and abandonment of shopping carts. The municipal code requires owners of retail establishments with more than five shopping carts to prepare and submit a written plan to prevent customers from removing shopping carts from their premises and to retrieve any that may have been removed. Owners must submit the plan to the city by March 31st, 2022. A notice of public hearing regarding the proposed fee for processing of the mandatory shopping cart plans was published on October 7th and 14th, 2021. The proposed fee for processing of new mandatory shopping cart plans is $188.40. This is based on one hour of the Director of Planning and Building Services at the fully burdened hourly rate. The proposed fee for processing of revisions to the mandatory shopping cart plans is $94.20. This is based on a half an hour of the Director of Planning and Building Services at the fully burdened hourly rate. Staff recommends that the City Council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution number 21-62, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my staff report, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the staff report. Have any questions of the report? Sunny, you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. When I'm reading the staff report, I cannot help say that our Director of Planning and Building Services, I know she's very smart, she's very efficient, but is one hour sufficient for reviewing a new plan? That's number one. And number two is, is there anyone else who will be supporting the director in reviewing the plan?
I'll go ahead and speak to that, and I don't know if Beth would also like to comment, but yeah, this was in discussion with the director, and she did opine that she would be the one reviewing, and the timeframe stated would be sufficient. So Beth, I don't know if you want to speak to that, if you're available?
Yes, Bernie, I'm here tonight. Councilmember Santinas, I do think one hour is sufficient. Usually, on the first review, it takes the longest, probably 30 minutes, because it is a simple site plan. So it's a simple site plan, understanding where the shopping carts are going to be located, and then reviewing the locking mechanisms and all of that. So I do think it's a rather simple plan check review. And then usually, it's 30 minutes on the first one. It could be 15 minutes on the second, and third, plan check if needed.
Okay, all right, as long as we are recovering our full cost, then we're good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
No comments, no questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hamada.
Again, not on the fee. I think it's appropriate, and if that's what the code says, too, I assume it's subject to the director's, you know, review. Maybe stretching some, a little bit of discussion on this, really, this plan. Again, it also talks about retrieval, too. So I'm thinking of scenarios, and again, if it's something to be discussed later, that's fine. Situations where carts are in possession of homeless, by homeless people. How is that going to work if that can be responded to under this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll field that particular question. Two things, one is just as a reminder, this is a public hearing specifically for a fee and not for the enforcement techniques for the shopping cart. But to generally answer your question, it is a bit problematic. However, if the shopping carts haven't left the premises without the owner's permission, that means effectively they are stolen pieces of equipment from those particular establishments, which among other things allows law enforcement to stop and question the individuals pushing the shopping carts. At which point, if they are indeed qualified as homeless, we have a whole different protocol to implement with regard to homeless folks. Eventually, the shopping cart would be retrieved, though, by the owner or by the owner's retrieval company. So it will be addressed from the standpoint of we're not going to have abandoned shopping carts on the streets as a regular matter. Obviously, we're not going to have it, people swoop in immediately and pick up every single shopping cart. It will be treated as any other code enforcement matter. But it is addressed under both the shopping cart protocols and under the homeless contact protocols.
Okay, thank you very much for those general comments, girl.
Any other questions?
That'll be all, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamada. So I'd look for a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the hearing, public hearing.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Raymond Hamada, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez to open the public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. So, Madam City Clerk, could you indicate that we have an open public hearing? Is there any testimony that want to be offered?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, hearing no comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Raymond Hamada to close the public hearing, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez to close the public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. Any more discussion, or would you like to make a vote or a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one follow-up question, actually, to, based off of Councilmember Hamada's question. Based off of the conversation and the statements made by our city attorney, a recovery fee then, or code enforcement, or an enforcement fee then would not be appropriate, right?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so if there was indeed a theft of a shopping cart, that would be treated more than likely as with an administrative citation that would be issued to the individual. But the reality is, is that with those homeless folks, they're indigenous. So there's really, it's more of a retrieval process than anything else. I don't think it's a practical matter that you really need an additional fee. This fee would be imposed upon the actual owners of the shopping carts in order to recoup the costs associated with processing the plans that they're supposed to be submitting to the city. So really, from, it's the broken windows theory of code enforcement, which is if we require the owners to take responsibility for their equipment to make sure that it doesn't go off the property, then we, as a city, have fewer problems citywide with regard to folks using their shopping carts for other purposes. And so that's really the basis for the fee.
Completely understandable. I only bring it up for the idea of more proactive code enforcement in general, but thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Any other questions? Otherwise, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the city of Bellflower to adopt Resolution 21-62.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinas, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Consent calendar. Well, we have ordinance and resolutions had none. Number 12, consideration 13, none. Consent calendar 14A through 14K. Any recusals or conflicts? Does anyone have any conflicts on any of the evening's consent calendar items? And are there any items the council members wish to pull for separate discussion or consideration?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 14I for separate discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item B.
Anything else except those two? All right, let's start with 14I, Mr. Santinas.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Delongha available?
He's on the line.
I'm online, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delongha. Thank you for this report, and I'm glad that, based on this recommendation, we're able to help or to support our businesses in Bellflower, especially during these most difficult times. I just have a few questions. One is, prior to COVID, I remember that Golden Flower, also known as Golden Coral, was doing well. So first question is, since the beginning, since they started the business in 2014, 2015, until we got hit with COVID, were they meeting the threshold of $60,000 in sales tax?
Yes, sir, they've exceeded that in every year that they've been operating up till the pandemic.
Without exception?
Without exception.
Okay, so based on the recommendation from staff that we are foregoing the, basically foregoing the interest for 2020 and 2021, which is during the COVID years, so what is the financial impact to the city?
Well, sir, the financial impact would be minimal because if they stay in business and continue... business and continue on going forth and meeting their financial obligation, the, the sales tax threshold, the entire loan will be forgiven. So it's a sort of a soft interest rather than a hard interest cost. To us, it's just part of the charge on their, on their note, and the note is forgiven at the end of the term if they meet all their requirements.
No, no, specifically for 2020, 2021.
Mr. Santinez, $52,000 on lost interest if they were to have to pay back.
I just want to clarify, because for the benefit of the public, so that they understand the question, because the interest is zero, so I'm looking for the financial impact of the zero interest in those two years.
Got it, sorry for misunderstanding.
So the answer is $52,000. Okay, very good, okay. And then the recommendation is for the next two years, 2022 and 2023, we will reduce the threshold from 60,000 to 45,000.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's good. And, and again, my, my, my comment here is, I'm glad that we're able to, to assist them during this time, and going back to when we were discussing about the promissory note about this, in my mind, I had no intention of collecting the interest, honestly, because I want them to succeed. Because if, my point is, if they're, if they're successful, the city is also successful. So to be, to be very blunt, I don't want to see any interest, you know? I want them to do really well. So thank you, Mayor. That's all my questions.
All right, thank you very much. All right, 14B, Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just have a question for Tay on page two, item number, for the air quality management district fee, kind of just a little curious about that and what, what entails that fee? Is that an annual fee that we pay, or is that a project? I was, those are the only things I couldn't understand.
Yes, good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. We receive funding from AKMD, Air Quality Management District, every year. We get four quarterly payments. The amount that's shown on that report, 24,000, is the accumulated funds that the city has and which we can spend on qualified emission, mitigating equipment purchases, and other projects.
Oh, good to know. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you. All right, that was it. I just wanted a clarification.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So that's sufficient. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santinez, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez to approve the consent calendar. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye. Council reports, this, since Mayor Pro Tem Dutton is absent this evening, we'll start with Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, again, a, a number of the activities that I participated in, I, I know that the others have, so maybe I'll, I'll leave some of those, but again, I was honored to participate in the prayer breakfast, so that, that was on the 12th, and I did have the opportunity with, again, Councilman Sanchez on the 19th to go to Azusa to visit the Serrano Project. We did inspection, so I think leaving that, we are quite impressed on, on, on the quality of work that they, that they undertake, so hopefully, that could be definitely, you know, presented here in town. On the 20th, I did have, attend the California Contract City Association Board of Directors, again, with some fellow colleagues, and again, if maybe one of the others might want to comment on that, again, we had an opportunity to meet the Chair of the Blue Ribbon Commission on Homeless, Mary Wickham, and so she provided a, a discussion. On the 22nd, I attended the State of the State. I was invited by SCAG as the regional council member. We heard Anthony Rendon, the Speaker of the Assembly, and again, he presented, overall, a good picture of, of what's happening in the state and how things are looking up, so I'll go with that. And this past Saturday, some colleagues and I were also at the Tri-Cities Relay for Life in Norwalk, so, again, a nice event, and it was raining, unfortunately, but kind of kept the, the attendance down, but again, it's good to see those kind of activities, again, moving forward, and I'll leave it at that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'll kind of touch a little bit more on that ribbon, the Blue Ribbon Commission that was at the Contract Cities Dinner. It was interesting to hear from the executive how they're going to be working to bring some improvement to the work that they're doing to really address our homeless challenges that we have as a region. They've got a hard job to do, that commission itself, but from the hearing from the executive, I was pleased to hear that they're gonna make the, ask the tough questions and, and really provide robust options on how to move forward and using those funds that are allocated. So I'll just report back a little bit on that, since Councilmember Hamada touched on it, and then I know I was in attendance with all of you at the other events, so I'll let someone else speak on those other events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Santinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add on the mayor's prayer breakfast, I want to thank the, the Bellflower Municipal Association for hosting that wonderful event. I wish that more people could come. And also, I want to thank staff of Economic Development Department for hosting the, the Gateway Cities Business Mega Mixer at Steel Crab. I think it was well-attended from, especially from members of the city council of other cities. They came to Bellflower, and it was a great opportunity to showcase what Bellflower is all about. And I also, at, at last meeting, you presented me with a certificate proclaiming this month as the Philippine-American History Month. I went to the event with the Philippine Consul General, and he was surprised to get the presentation, and, but he was very, very pleased. And, and finally, to piggyback on Councilmember Hamada's and Councilmember Sanchez's comment on the California Contract Cities Meeting, I also went to that meeting, and I, I got in touch with the Executive Director of the Blue Ribbon Commission. We exchanged cards, and we are setting up a date to kind of talk about how we can get more funding from, well, not more funding, how we can get funding from Measure H. So I, I spoke with the city manager already about this and alerted him, and as soon as the date is, is confirmed, we will have a meeting. So hopefully, we'll get some funding from Measure H. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Councilmember, thank you so much. So one of the things that happened last week is, at our Quanis Club, our guest speaker was Senator, State Senator Bob Archileta, and he had a question and answer period, and we had an answer, you know, it was fun to talk to him one-on-one about the plans as we all faced the big catastrophe of homelessness, and so we encouraged him to try to work with the state on trying to reopen Metropolitan over here, and he indicated that the state is looking at that, and he has an appointment with several of the people that are in charge of the state physical plants to see what it would take to make that place viable, again, to try to help people on the street, and that was a really good conversation to have one-on-one with him. And in fact, at the conclusion, we offered him the chance to become a member of Bellflower Quanis Club, and he accepted the invitation. So we'll see how that goes. I, the board will vote on this, but it'll be fun to have a state senator in our local attendance. But beyond that, things in Bellflower seem to be working fine. Happy to report the rain that was supposed to, deluges today was not nearly as severe, so didn't have any real concerns that way, but I'm, we're hoping for more rain to get past this drought. But as your mayor, I am thankful that everything in the city is working so well, and that we continue to prosper even through the COVID. Staff continues to work hard to make sure that everything stays in place. And with that, I am going to adjourn our meeting to 5:30 p.m. on Monday, November 8th, at 2021. The time is 7:40. We're adjourned.